Welcome to the meeting of, the school committee meeting of Monday, April 27th, 2020. We'll start off with the acceptance of the meeting minutes from April 13th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's the four of us. Thank you. Move on to audience and I'll pass it to Dr. Kran.
Thank you. So we have with us tonight two students who, in their creativity and desire to be helpful, have made themselves somewhat locally famous by doing some work with 3D masks. I have Joseph Messier and Harrison Holbrook with us tonight and they're going to tell us a little bit about what got them interested in making masks for our first responders. Harry, maybe we could start with you. Could you tell us a little bit about how did this get started?
So it all started when, on the very first days of quarantine, when my dad asked, my dad challenged me if I could make a 3D printer mask. And we did, and we made two of them. And then my mom's friend told her that they didn't really need masks, but what they needed was these extenders because the back of their ears were raw from the masks band.
Oh, good.
So you decided to make those instead?
Yep. We can make about 16 to 20 a day.
Oh, good.
Wow. And so are you still making them now or have you finished making those and you're on something else?
We're still making them now.
Really? Good. How many, you're still doing 16 a day?
Uh, no, we, well, yes, we're making 16 a day, but other people started helping and we distributed about 6,000, so.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent.
I, I can tell you, I can tell you that my wife has a handful of them. I have a couple for mine and I use it. She uses hers every day at work and I use mine every time I go into a house for work or if I go to the store. The things make your ears feel a lot better. So, good job.
Excellent. Excellent. Did you write the program yourself?
Uh, I did not. I got the design from a website called Thingiverse. It was open source.
That's resourceful. That's good.
And Joseph, could you tell us a little bit about how you started making 3D masks?
Uh, yeah, I first heard about it, or my mom first heard about it on the news. And she tried to get me up and started with my own printer that I have here. I reached out to Mr. Harrison and he let me use the printer there. And I spent the night playing with the design and I used an open source software and a design. Tried that. It didn't, we got one fully working prototype that night, or that day during, while we're at the school. He let us gratefully, gracefully take on the printer. Uh, and then we started producing one that I customly designed.
Oh, wow.
Wow. Nice job.
And we've been producing about six or seven of those a day. Depends on how much I sleep. But recently, we just donated about 20 of them to the Rockland Food Pantry, so they wouldn't have to shut down.
Oh, good.
That's great.
We've been also making these, like little hooks, open doors or press elevator. Because a lot of people aren't willing to touch the doors or anything. And all this stuff is, I created myself.
So you wrote the programs yourself?
Yeah.
All right. What language did you use?
Uh, well, I just use the open source software that I have. It's a Tinkercad and it's a-
Oh, okay. Tinkercad. Yeah, okay. No, that one. Good job.
That's great. Well, we just, we was, we just wanted to have you on tonight to say thank you for your, for your ingenuity and for making a difference and for making us proud. And just wanted to say thank you. I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything.
Really, really good job. Nice, nice, you know, good initiative and good designs and, you know, excellent job.
I think it's-
Sorry. I'd just like to say thank you to the Holbrook family. I was able to get two of the extenders for my two friends that are nurses up in the North Shore and they were very, very grateful to have them. And also Joey, I think I'd be watching you on Shark Tank with your new invention, hopefully one day soon.
Good job.
Yeah, it's great to see some young Bulldogs doing us proud.
Yes.
I agree. I'm so proud of you guys. You're representing Rockland well. You know, Rockland doesn't always get that good name and here are two of our smarties showing up and out there. You know, I appreciate you using your own smart and coming up with what something positive could be. I'm very impressed with from both of you. So thank you for coming tonight. We're happy to have you and we're just so proud of you.
And you should also, it sounds like we should also be thanking your parents because I think they-
Correct.
To get you guys motivated. So thank them from us as well.
They can certainly reach out back to us if you need anything else or any, you know, anything that we as a school can do for you all. Please let us know.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we send them a letter of congratulations and thanks and put it in their file, in their primitive file.
I'll second that.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Nope.
Are you here? No? Okay. I didn't want to, I didn't want to get off and say, oh, I didn't let them ask, so.
They can't be excused from their schoolwork either, I guess.
I guess not. Maybe a homework pass in case they don't get enough sleep. They're busy saving the world.
If you're the name in science. In math, so.
Thanks so much, gentlemen. All right, thank you. We'll move on to correspondence. There's nothing under that, so then I'll go back to Dr. Kran with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Last week, as everyone knows, the governor announced that schools are closed for the remainder of the year. Coinciding with the governor's announcement, the commissioner of education released a document called Strengthening Our Remote Learning Plans. This guide builds on previously released guidance and asks that schools intensify their focus on two key areas moving forward. First, it recommends that teachers focus on specific curriculum standards or power standards, which are thought to be the most critical to student success in the next grade. So they're asking us to focus on those standards that'll support students as they move into their next grade. Secondly, it suggests that school districts focus on a program that reaches students who are not successfully engaging in remote learning. So I started this morning a formal review of this document with senior leadership team. We'll be having some more meetings this week and I will keep you posted. But I do look forward to using the guidance from DESI to help make our program even stronger. Next, I'd just like to let everyone know, I do attend a weekly coronavirus task force working group meeting every Monday morning at nine o'clock with our town manager and chief of police and chief of fire and also our health agent. And we just talk about what's going on and keep everyone up to speed, but I wanted you to know that I was doing that and had that meeting with them this morning and I appreciate their support and knowing what's going on in the world of police, fire and health and keeping them informed about the schools. Next, I would like to thank our teachers, our counselors and our support staff. They continue to step up and handle this incredible challenge each day. Although we respect that this is a very dangerous pandemic, we're still left with the need to educate our children and to prepare for our inevitable return to school. To our teachers, I say keep it up and thank you. The phone calls you're making to parents to help with technical issues, the emails, the book suggestions, the driving things over to student homes, all of these are appreciated and noted. The countless ways you're trying to facilitate this unprecedented situation. There was no class offered on how to teach first grade remotely. So thank you for making it up as we go along. Teachers are going above and beyond by delivering homework packets, supplies, lunches, books, sending notes of encouragement and reaching out to families in, in many ways. And I just wanted to give them a pat on the back and say, keep it up. We have the rest of the year. To our students, the school year is not over and I'm asking that you keep up the hard work and stay focused on finishing out the school year strong. Your teachers are working hard. For whatever work you don't do now, you're going to have to do in the fall anyway. So I highly recommend that you use this time when it's quiet and you're forced to be home to concentrate on your studies. Maybe start to concentrate on an aspect of your studies that you'd never been all that interested in, but for some reason you're finding it interesting now. Maybe you pull out an extra book and read it on that subject. But now's the time, you have the time, use the time, my recommendation. And then finally, to our seniors, class of 2020, just want to say that I'm sorry for your loss and I recognize that it is a loss. You've waited patiently for your turn at senior year and I could see how it might feel to you like something had been taken away. And I want you to know that I fully support Dr. Harrison's efforts to provide you with as many of these senior experiences as possible, when it's safe for all of us to do so. And I will continue to support and work with him to do everything we can for the class of 2020. And if it means that we're having a prom next November, so be it. But I think we should have it anyway because you earned it. The final thing that I'd like to talk about during the superintendent's report tonight has to do with further furloughs for the Rockland Public Schools. As a result of the COVID-19 closure for the long-term financial health of the district, we're forced to make some difficult financial decisions. I want to say I've been asked by some people, why do you need to furlough employees when the town has voted a budget and you have the money? Why don't you just spend the money? What I think a lot of folks don't understand about the school budget is approximately $25 million of the school budget comes from the town. And approximately another $5 million comes from grants and revolving accounts. These revolving accounts are income that are generated from before and after school, from daycare, from building rentals and from some other sources. But this is income that we budget and count on having. Because the schools are closed, that income is not coming in and we have to make up for that elsewhere in the budget. In addition to this, we are not only planning to be fiscally responsible for 2019, 2020, this current school year, which ends on July 1st, but we are very concerned about the FY21 school budget. We have every reason to believe that on the state level, that there will be cuts to the town of Rockland that will again be passed on to the schools. We are concerned that we will have a, a very difficult budget season next year. It's therefore our fiscal responsibility to do everything we can this year to save every dollar possible. I will tell you that this is the most difficult thing that I've ever had to be a part of professionally because we're telling people who are a part of our team that we're putting you on the bench for eight weeks. And I know that it doesn't feel very good, but I will tell you that we wouldn't have chosen furloughs if we didn't think it would work out for you as well. If the timing, the timing right now for people on furlough can collect unemployment, currently there's a $600 a week incentive on unemployment. So if you're on unemployment, you receive half of your pay plus $600 a week plus $25 per child. So when we do the math on this, the people that we are furloughing should remain financially whole during this seven week, approximately seven week furlough, seven to eight week furlough. If that weren't the case, we may not be having this conversation because again, we're very concerned about the wellbeing of all of our members. So tonight, I am recommending that the school committee vote to implement an unpaid furlough for all paraprofessionals, salaried and non-salaried cafeteria workers, drivers, nurses and two non-union positions effective April 27th. And again, unlike a layoff, a furlough is temporary. During a furlough, the impacted workers remain an employee of the district but can collect unemployment benefits. For the union workers, this furlough would begin on April, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, for the union workers, this furlough begins on April 27th and ends on June 5th. And again, during the, during the furlough, we anticipate our workers will be able to collect 50% of their weekly salary plus $600 a week plus $25 per child, plus be able to keep their health insurance with the school, which is another important, important fact. By keeping their insurance with the school, they still have to pay their family portion, which is approximately 21% of the cost of healthcare. If we were to do layoffs, they would need to use Cobra, which would cost them approximately 101%. So again, the furlough makes sense for our members and it, furloughs make sense right now financially for the district. So again, I'm asking the school committee to vote to implement an unpaid furlough for all paraprofessionals, salaried and non-salaried cafeteria workers, drivers, nurses and two non-union positions effective April 27th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Kran, if I may?
Go ahead.
Dr. Kran?
Yep.
The average weekly wage, it's, it's actually their average weekly wage plus up to $832 plus 600. Not 50% of their average weekly wage. Their, their average weekly wage ate up to $832 plus 600.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Ms. Hackett. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Anyone have any questions?
Sorry, this has to be done.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that we have to do it, but we gotta, you know, make sure we're in a good spot for September roll around with a new budget if the state's gonna cut funds, which let's face it, it's gonna have to come from somewhere and schools and towns are usually the first shots.
I agree. Okay. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I just wanted to show our support from, like you're saying, Mike, on the school committee side of things. As elected officials, this is sort of the last we wanted to do. This isn't what we signed up for. But our job as school committee is to be financially smart for the town and for the district. On the flip side, to do the best thing for our employees here at Rockland Public Schools. So it is hard for us to sit here and do this two weeks now. But it is the best thing for us financially. And so even though I feel like we're all tossing and turning, I know I didn't really sleep knowing that this was coming. But as soon as, you know, we heard schools were closed, it's sort of inevitable. So we're just trying to do what is financially smart to stay ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve. For those people out in the public, if you have questions on how school budgeting is or we're not explaining something, don't hesitate to reach out to us. We're certainly accountable for what we're doing and that's what we're supposed to be here for as well. And that's all I have. Does, does anyone else want to say something before I move on to the next thing?
With, with you a hundred percent on that. It's, I mean, it's not something we take lightly and it's unfortunate that it has to be done, but you know, if anybody doesn't understand, you know where to find us.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing I'd say is that we have, you know, this has to be done and you know, hopefully we won't have to do any, any additional reductions.
Well, that's the, that's the point, Tom. I think the point is to be able to look back on this in six months and say, we did everything financially possible to be in the best possible position today. And this is not only important for the FY20 budget, but it's important for the FY21 budget as well.
Right.
Because of the uncertainty.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we take the vote?
We did.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Kran, is that all to your report?
That, that's all for my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. On to our regular reports, our financial reports from March. We have school department, Rockland High School, school activities and daycare. Entertaining three motions.
Three motions approved.
Three seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the four of us. Onto old business.
We have a request for approval of the 2020 through 2021 elementary school student parent handbook, the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four of us. Next, we have request for approval of the revised timeline for the senior activities.
Looking at it. On July, August, yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I have a question. Maddie, have you received any feedback regarding the proposed changes?
So Harrison sent us, Dr. Harrison sent us an email pretty much finding out like what it would look like. And he was like, this still needs to be approved, but like, these are our goals. So that's about all we've gotten, but.
Okay. I just haven't, I don't know if you've heard anything from other seniors.
Right now, not really. My friends and I, we're just kind of happy that they're trying their best. All the seniors understand that like, it's like not a normal circumstance. We're just really thankful that like, everyone's putting in such an effort. Like, no one really has any complaints that I've heard and so we're just, I don't know, hoping that I-
Right.
You see the schedule, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And I agree with Dr. Kran in saying that we support Dr. Harrison, that you all have earned your right to sort of have all these events and you've gotten here and, you know, if it's up to us approving it, like he said, a prom in November, then, you know, we'll go there. So I, I don't want you all to worry. If you're worrying, don't, you know, hesitate to reach out to us. I do think Dr. Harrison has it under control and is doing best by shore. I mean, so I'm hoping that we don't have seniors panicking.
No.
You know, it's, it's already a sad day for them, so.
It, you know, I think the, the biggest thing is hopefully by this proposed timeline, the 250 and over will be allowed, right? Because ultimately, that's, that's what we need. You to be able to have the prom and have graduation the way you want it, the way it should be, you know? And since this has started back in March, the thing that kept gnawing at me was making sure that our seniors got their graduation and get their prom. So whenever it needs to be, it will be, you know? And at this rate, considering we don't know when the election will be, it looks like I might even be there. So I might be there even if I'm not there.
Oh, yeah, you should be there.
You know, this is, you know, this is ridiculous and you guys will get your day. Whenever it is, you'll get it.
You can, so.
Okay. Any questions? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have new business, request for approval of the Rockland High School Student Handbook, first reading.
Motion to table.
Second.
Any questions? This is what we normally do. I just want to put it out for any questions.
It's heavy.
Heavy. I agree.
A lot of paper.
We have plenty of time at home to read through it.
That's right, for the second one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the four of us. And the next is evaluation process for 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Yeah, please. So obviously, we had to figure out how we're going to handle teacher evaluation for the rest of the year. So we sat down with the union and we talked about different options and things that we could do. We've had conversations, obviously, with, with you guys. And due to the COVID-19 virus, the Rockland educators and the school committee have come to an agreement. And the idea what is that if, if you're a first year teacher, next year you'll become a second year teacher. If you're a second year teacher, next year you become a third year teacher. If you were a third year teacher, next year you get professional status. So everyone is going to move ahead a year.
Okay.
If you're on a directed growth plan or an improvement plan, or any educator who is on a self-directed growth plan or developing educator plan with evaluation that indicated concerns, you will have the timelines for evaluation moved back by the same number of school days. So for example, if you were, if you were 100 days into a 150-day improvement plan, when we start up in the fall, you'll have 50 more days of an improvement plan. So if it was meant to be a full year, it'll just, you'll continue that amount of time. And then finally, so that everyone's personnel file makes sense in three years when we look back, we will place a copy of the agreement with the union in the file of each employee along with any evaluation materials completed prior to March 13th, 2020. This is based on guidance that we got from our attorney, Mike Long. I feel very confident in recommending this to the school committee and hope you'll approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? No. I agree. I agree with-
Looks, looks like a good deal.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the four of us. Okay. Then moving on to personnel information. Dr. Kran, do you have anything to add?
Just two, two little things. Well, they're not so little, but two things. One, I just noticed Amanda Lanigan leave of absence here too. I think she is over in Europe somewhere, teaching?
Wow.
Does anyone know? Amanda? Anyway, it's interesting. We're approving her second year leave of absence, so she must be enjoying her work. And then finally, we want to say thank you and sad farewell to Karen McKinnon, who has been our Title I and literacy coach at the elementary school for quite a number of years. We're going to miss her very much. She's, has an excellent opportunity in another town to do some, some similar work, but it's an advancement for her. So we wish her all the best. We will miss her and we thank her for her service. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then lastly, we have public service announcements. We'll start with Ms. Gere.
So the teachers have been really awesome with working with us and giving us the information that we need and helping us along with our work and just kind of there to guide us. That has been awesome. Dr. Harrison has been doing a great job of keeping the high schoolers informed, especially the seniors about what's going on and we know that he's really trying his best. And there's a new little project in the works from Mrs. C., our class president, the class officers and Dr. Harrison. They're gonna try to encourage all of the seniors to paint rocks and make like a little rock garden type thing. So there'll be rocks available at the school to pick up on Wednesday. And we're working with the art department to get some of their paint that they would have had to throw out by the end of the year to kind of use that. So we're gonna have paint available for seniors. And then we've also had money donated to buy brushes for kids that may not have access to them. So that's all we've got going on.
I think that sounds like a lot. Ms. Harrison?
Hi.
Hi.
I'd just like to say thank you for everyone's hard work over the last couple of weeks. I know it's been difficult. I also want to thank the teachers as well and for the students to stay engaged and continue to work hard on remote learning and stay healthy.
Thank you. Back to Ms. Gere. Do you know how many days are left of your senior year? You must still be counting.
I have no idea.
I have no idea. At this point. Sorry. I have no, no idea. I know our last day.
Knows what day is it?
Is May, I don't even know.
No, no.
If we didn't have school for me, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even know it was Monday.
Same.
I know that my last day of classes is May 20th, and then we should get our grades by May 22nd, and then that's it.
That's it. It's coming quick. Friday's May 1st, just to, so you know, Friday's May 1st.
Crazy.
It's coming fast. Mr. Mills?
I know, I just, yeah, everybody just be safe. You know, this is crazy, crazy stuff. I mean, you know, so like I said earlier, you know, this is my fifth meeting today with, you know, students and everybody else at my school and teachers. And it's very unusual. It's, it's so, so strange and out of character. And I just, you know, hope everybody, like I said, just stay safe. And, you know, like, like Dr. Kron said, if you run out of schoolwork, get a nice book and sit down and read and, you know, and exercise. And take care of yourselves, everybody. That's it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Garofalo?
Yeah, kind of to piggyback on what Tom said, everybody just be safe, be smart. You know, wear your mask when you go out to a store if you have to. Only go if you need to. Wash your hands. Gloves are actually not the way to go. Ultimately, the other thing, if you know somebody who's on the front lines, nurses, doctors, paramedics, fire, police.
Thank them.
Thank them, you know. They're, they're caring a lot. You know, those, those medical staffs at the hospital are coming home heavy every night. They don't know when they go into work, what they're gonna get, you know. And it's, and it's not something that's, you know, relegated just to an ER department or an ICU department. It's, it's rampant. You could have somebody with an ortho surgery that ends up having it or somebody giving birth. So, you know, just, just realize what, what they're going through with their families. And, you know, everyone just take a look around what you have in your house when you're sitting there and, and really appreciate it. And the fun fact is, you know, our kids and our students right now are living a history lesson. You know, their kids and grandkids will learn about this in their history classes. You know, and, and that's something, you know, if there's one bright thing to look at, it's that there's something here that these kids are gonna be able to talk about for years and to teach their family about, so.
Yeah. Feels a lot like 9/11, going back there, thinking about that, what you just said, Mike.
Yeah.
And a lot of that stuff, you know.
Different, yeah. Yeah.
So sits there, you know?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I think it goes into, too, with the grocery store workers, all those people that are still there.
Everybody.
Directors, things like that, that it's just anyone that still has to get up and go up to work every day and work with the public. And anyway, you know, it's such a scary time. I'm lucky that I get to just stay home. I leave the house to go to the grocery store for a walk, something to that effect. But for the most part, we're home, we're in our own yard. And it's kind of a weird thing that that's becoming our normal. They're in a routine, and we're doing better with that. And I agree, just everyone stay safe and do the best that you can in this time. If you're not doing well, reach out to someone else that, you know, you can lean on. In here in school-wise, if you need something, don't hesitate to reach out to a teacher or the principals, whoever you can, you know. I think, yeah, that's all. Stay well, stay safe. Anybody, anything else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And good night, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.